Sir. I've got to put my ears in the middle of this.
I'll just let you pick it up when I pick up.
I don't.
Okay, we are starting tonight with two presentations before we get into the actual committee cycle. And also, in terms of the committee cycle, I'd like to move government operations up to the first committee we do to meet. So, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President. But have, this night, Kurt Endress from Prospect Lending to begin over the scenario for the 203K funding, where again, it's going to be a lot of great properties, we've got some ones that need a little bit of fine tuning, a little PLC, and then there's some properties that have really been in decline but need major or total rehims. And the product that Kurt and his company represent allows people to take advantage of that, where you can go in, a piece of property, purchase it, and do your financing for the acquisition, rehabilitation of the property, all in one application and package. And so, I just wanted Kurt to be able to, again, give a summary of that, so the council is aware of that option, and be available for any questions, just as we're looking at different ways where we can improve our housing stock and create homeownership opportunities in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Kurt Endress with Prospect Lending, and we've been brought into the Homes Initiative to offer a secondary source of financing for some of the buyers with properties that are in a condition where they need improvement to, you know, be habitable. One of the loan programs that, you know, we can offer to help the buyers is a renovation loan, where they can finance the cost of the renovations for the house into essentially the purchase price of the home. You know, we're getting into it a little bit now, and we have some loan applications coming in, and I think it's a really good tool for the city to be able to move some of the distressed inventory that you have through this initiative. And we look forward to, you know, being able to finance the homes that a lot of lenders might shy away of and not be able to finance. In a nutshell, what the loan does is it allows a buyer of the home to put money that they need to renovate the home into the initial mortgage, so that they have one closing, one set of closing costs, and it's, you know, it's done all at the same time. There's other options available as well for renovation financing for these homes, but we just wanted to give you a little bit of an overview and see if you had any questions of us that we might be able to answer, to kind of further explain it, and how it can help to maybe move some of these assets that the city has. Are there any questions?
Is ready to buy a house yet?
Yeah, you know, this PowerPoint here is, I don't want to, you know, bore you with all the details of it, but we wanted to pass them out so you have a general idea of what the program is, and you'll see some statistics in there of the housing stock within the whole county that might be eligible for this type of financing. It's different than a regular mortgage, where someone, you know, takes out that mortgage to simply purchase a home. We're saying, okay, if you need to buy a house for, you know, maybe it's $50,000, but it needs another $50,000 in repairs, well, we'll lend you money off that $100,000 total number. And that's what makes it a little bit unique, and allows the buyer to finance what they need without really going into their own pocket, where they might not have the means to do so. So hopefully, that option allows you, you know, to sell more of these homes in a timely fashion, and that's what we're here for.
From a, just a mortgage industry perspective, I guess, who takes on that additional risk,
I suppose, where, you know, if you're buying a brand-new house, and you walk in, you get the key into the brand-new house, there's no repairs needed, versus this, right, there's a risk, you send it to a project, and you find that something else needs repairing, or your budgeting is always a challenge, things like that.
Sure.
Where's the extra risk?
The risk is really on us as the lender. You know, we're willing to take that risk. This product is an FHA loan, so it's backed by the federal government and insured by the federal government. The bid from the contractor, or the estimate, I should say, is very detailed, so we know exactly, line by line, what they're going to do. But we also build in a 15% contingency reserve fund, so that, you know, if someone's borrowing maybe, you know, $50,000 in repairs, we're going to make them take out a little bit more than what they need, just in case, when they do open up that wall and find, you know, the pipes are burst, or something of that nature, they have additional money. And then if that money's not used, it goes back to pay down the principal balance of the borrower's loan. But we do build in a 15% contingency reserve fund to cover any unanticipated costs that might arise through the process. But the estimate and the initial bid is also very detailed, and we typically have a HUD-approved consulting review of the contractor's bid, to both protect the consumer that's buying the home, and also protect us as the lender, so that we're not overlending. So we make sure that those bids are in line with what the market prices should be for that work. Any other questions?
Are you publicizing this? I mean, I know we have press conferences and things like this.
Sure, sure. Actually, this PowerPoint here that you have in front of you is a follow-up PowerPoint based on a national television ad that we ran back in February, and it's running still to this day on do-it-yourself network, HGTV. So there is a television campaign for us to promote it nationally, and then locally, you know, we've participated with the mayor, with the press conference, to try to get the word out there, and also really in the local real estate community. Joe Rotano, one of our loan officers, is very involved in the community here, and, you know, it's really kind of spreading the word through the real estate community to the realtors, so that they are also informing the buyers. Because a lot of the buyers don't even know that you can do this. You know, they might, yeah, you see the house and say, oh, I'd love to buy the house, but I don't have the money to renovate it. Well, now you have the solution, and, you know, that's this loan.
Mortgage rates compared to the rest of the market?
Fairly comparable to the rest of the market, maybe a little bit higher, because it is an additional risk, where you're taking on a renovation, but all in all, you know, very low, comparatively speaking, to historical rates. Interest rates are still very good.
Kurt, that ends up being a 30-year fixed?
Thirty, yeah, it's a 30-year fixed-rate mortgage, so it's a safe and sound product, no prepayment penalty or anything of that nature, so it's, you know, fairly conservative as far as a mortgage product goes.
So the buyer, though, wouldn't be able to wrap their down payment into this, it says it requires a 3.5%?
Requires a 3.5% down payment. The city, though, does have a grant program also. That grant program can be used in conjunction with this mortgage product if the buyer qualifies for that grant.
With a 3% down, you know, conventional mortgage in today's market, banks want 20% down. So it's, you know, it's a very favorable product for people in this area. For owner-occupied, President, it's not for investors?
Correct. This is, this product we're speaking about is owner-occupied only, one through four family homes. So you could use it on, say, a duplex, or something like that, but you do have to live in the property. Well, thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, and this will be part of the program tomorrow?
Yes. Endgoing program.
Okay.
Every day.
Okay. And see, I was going to see if they added one more copy of the handout for Kathleen.
Actually, I have one here.
Okay, give that to Gary then. All right, the second report is our affirmative action update with Miriam Ducey. So Miriam, come on up and join us.
I have the man.
Okay. After you finish that, come join us.
You have the exhaustive report, and what I'm going to do basically is a couple of highlights, so if you have any questions. If you have any questions for me, you can go over it, you can ask me questions to my doing work, or you can do it to us. I wanted to show you a three-year tracking system, actually, three-year tracking data that, for the city, this is full-time and part-time employee. What you're looking at is the full-time, and the new hires are included in the full-time numbers. And basically, as you can see, this is the way, this is the way the workforce has been going for the past three years. And if we go a little bit more into the data, I can actually show you where these employees are located. The federal government usually uses, the federal government uses these categories, and this, with these are the official administrators, and in your report, there is a detail as to who is, who is considered an official administrator, and who is a professional, and so on. In the full-time and part-time, the official administrators, all of you are included in there, but in the full-time report, the council is removed, because you are on a part-time basis and not necessarily full-time. And what I have here is a, is a workforce, and the analysis is by ethnicity or race, as we call it. And if we look at, if we look at it gender-specific, this is the workforce by gender, this is full-time and part-time, and these are the numbers, and on the, on the right is by ethnicity. This is the same data that's on here, this is what you're looking at in terms of ethnicity, what is, what is the workforce look like. The next one is a comparison between the workforce and the employable population. Basically, what I have done is that, in order to sit, to sit for most civil services, you have to be at least 18 years old with a high school diploma, so what I have done is, from 18 years on, this is, this is the employable population that I've been talking about. If you're looking at the data, this is the city employable population, and in the red is the city workforce by ethnicity. And the next one is also the same information, the workforce compared to the city, and that is by gender, and I've also added the minority, this minority data includes both male and female in the current workforce. The next information I have for you is, the question would be, well, what exactly is the affirmative action office doing in the community? In 20, this is from December 2011 to December 2012. We have done several presentations in the community, we have done review sessions, we've done preparation sessions, we've gone into the community and have spoken with the different groups that are out there, and informing them about our civil service announcements, as well as the positions that become open that does not require a civil service exam. And these numbers, they will not add up. The difficulty that we have with the, with data gathering is that anyone that participates has to self-report. Basically, I have the form, I hand it to everyone coming into the presentation, but it's up to them to fill it out. It's never mandatory. I strongly encourage them to fill it out, but sometimes they will fill it out, they will put, they will put gender, but then they will not put ethnicity, so I'll never have, it will not add up, basically. And what did we do? This is a report from this first quarter, from January to, January to March of this year, we've done three exam preparation sessions, and we've done, we've done two review sessions, and we've done one, how to prepare for a general civil service exam. So we are in the community, we are helping the community, we are informing them about those exams, those positions that are out there. But at the end of the day, when, when I do those, when I, for that person's invitation, this, this is the attendance that we are getting, this is the attendance that we got for the first quarter of 2013, and this is the breakdown of that, of that, of that quarter. And I know you would have, I know some of you may have some questions about contract compliance, this is the same information that I presented to you last time, there has not been any public works contract yet, but we anticipate in the next few weeks and months that there will be bids out there for contracts. And as you can see, we have, we have come close to our goal this year for some companies, we have from 9 to 11% participation for some of the companies that have done work for the city. As far as, what can I say? I haven't, I haven't received any discrimination complaints from anyone here in the city of Schenectady, but if we do receive complaints, we would investigate them, we would inform the mayor, I would inform the mayor that there is a complaint, and after I've reviewed the complaint or do an investigation, I would again, once again, report back to the mayor, who would share that information with you. I am not the ADA coordinator, I do not receive ADA complaints for the city, but I am the ADA coordinator for the county, because I know sometimes there is a little bit of, there's a little bit of overlap, but I don't do ADA for, for the city. And like I said, the actual report, you have it, so if you have any question for me, I'll entertain them now.
Questions? One thing I wanted to comment on is, I attended a meeting earlier this year with the mayor and a lot of the city staff, just talking about the whole affirmative action, you know, and concerns and all. And one of the key, I think, changes that happened was, before this, Miriam was not brought into the process when we were working with external contractors, until the process had already started, so some of the affirmative action things kind of got lost in the shuffle, but that process was changed now, so that she's involved, we write right in the beginning, and so I think that's probably helped a lot. Miriam, or Marion?
I see the things for the support, I see that there really hasn't been a lot in terms of women and, well, women and minorities, it really hasn't been, actually, there's been a decrease in females, and then went up and then down, and minorities as well, so is there anything that, I understand that you're going out, you're doing the presentations, but it's not increasing, so is there something, or you have looked, you're looking at something that will help to increase this, because the numbers are low, and they haven't changed, it's kind of steady, so?
The numbers that you're looking at, really, the best way to improve the numbers is to, for the women to actually take the civil service exams, and for example, I say in my report, when I was doing the salary analysis, I actually had to remove police and fighter, because they are predominantly Caucasian males, and they skew the data if we don't take them out. So when we remove police and fighter from the data, the women participation is actually okay, but if you're looking at it, if you're looking at it in the raw, you'll find that women are not increasing, women is not increasing, because, again, police and fighter really is overwhelming the data. But as, as I always say, it's not just, and it's not just women, it's minorities as well. The best way is to encourage them to take those civil service exams, because you have police and fighter that is almost 50% of the workforce. And if we can get women and minorities to actually take those particular exams, I do believe that we will see a lot of improvement in the numbers.
Anybody else? Questions? Kathy?
I just wondered, Miriam, I believe you said that they needed a GED or a diploma to take the civil service?
At a minimum, yes.
Exactly.
At a minimum, yes.
Correct. So what percentage, or do you have any sense of a percentage in the city that, of the workforce, that, that does not meet that minimum requirement at this point, in terms of?
You talked about city workforce?
The potential number of candidates who could take the civil service exam, just wondering, because I mean, I was reading an article about GEDs yesterday, and of course, with the, I'm wondering if, you know, we have that as a, as a significant reason why maybe more minorities, women, and so forth, are not taking, not taking the exam?
I have found that, I go into the high school, and I do the job shadow for the city and the county, and when I speak with the young people, I think there is a lack of knowledge about civil service and stability. It used to be that I would go into the high school and talk about civil service, and we'd need to take an exam, but then I have, I have changed my pitch to the students, and talk about job stability, how you can retire after 20 or 25 years, and the benefits. At 18 and 19, you don't really, you don't see, you don't get a good understanding of retirement, that you, with that, that presentation does not work well, but I can explain to them that it is steady income, it is good income, and by the time you turn 40 or 45, you can actually retire and start a second career. So it's the difference in pitch, I believe, to the high school students, that's what's going to work. And we bring them into C E Hall, we partner them with a city employee, so they can actually see the work that these employees do, and we stress the fact that, do you need a, do you need a, you need a high school diploma? Yes. Do you need to take a civil service exam, maybe for that particular position? So these things, I believe, that we're doing right now, will encourage the young people to consider a career in civil service.
Ms. Portia?
Yes, I think this is a three-year report, is this something that you actually review annually, because the last time I had one from 2009, eight to nine, so is this annually that you took, take a look at this data, or is it just whenever you're asked?
No, 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 no. The contract does not require that I do an annual report, but when I get asked to come before you, I need to present to you a picture of what is actually going on. In the county, I have to do an annual report, but in the city, I don't. Feel free to add it to the contract language, because I'm comfortable doing this every year. The year prior, the report that you were actually talking about was something that one of the council members had asked me to put together. This was totally outside of the realm of what I usually do, but council member had asked me to give a picture of what it looked like by department, and I did that. And that information is also available, if you need to see it, I will definitely share it with you, but as you, names are not on there, but it's not that difficult to get names attached to that particular picture that you're looking at, that you're talking about.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate this. All right, Government Ops?
This is what's called Order Government Operations, and first thing on the agenda is, I believe we're taking out of order support of the United States Postal Service.
Good evening. Mayor McCarthy, Madam President, members of the council. Many of you know me from other areas of our lives, but tonight, I'm here as the Director of Legislation for New York State, from National Association of Letter Carers. And we have submitted a proposal for your consideration as a council to support the continuation of our six-day delivery standards that we've had in the United States for the United States Postal Service, and supporting of the House and the Senate resolutions that are currently pending in committee in the United States, Senate and House. We have a very important role in the United States, as the United States Postal Service. We are the second-largest employer in the United States, second only to Walmart, with much better wages and benefits, by the way. We are under undue stress, however, and the resolutions that we're looking for support of in the House and the Senate are ones that will provide certain amounts of financial relief and restructuring of the postal services as an organization. On a regular basis, as members of the council, you represent the city of Schenectady and its many employees. It's very similar to the postal service, in a different venue. However, I don't, the city of Schenectady cannot survive under the current legislation that the postal service is being asked to survive under, in that, in 2006, and ongoing for the next 75 years, I doubt that the members of the council then or now could predict what your employment levels would be in 75 years from now. And I think that knowing the stress that the city is under, being asked to pay for future retiree health benefit premiums for the next 75 years, and doing it within a period of 10 years would put severe financial stress on the city of Schenectady. Well, it's certainly doing that in the postal service, to the tune of $5.6 billion a year. It's an unnecessary burden, it's a burden that we're the only agency of the federal government that is being forced into this, we are the only business in the United States that does this, and we are required to do it by law. Now, in addition, there are certainly changes going on within the postal service. Since our first Postmaster General, Benjamin Franklin, started up the postal service, we are not the same organization as we were 200-plus years ago, and 200 years from now, we're not going to be the same organization either. However, by Constitution, we are mandated to exist, we do not exist as a financial burden of the United States citizens, because we are run as a business. We are successful as a business, even though we have, we and the materials handling industry have suffered severely under this latest recession, but we can work our way through it as a business and as a quasi-government agency, with your support as a, as a city, and we're looking forward to support across the state and in the state legislature as well, sending a message to the United States that six-day delivery is valuable, is valuable for your citizens, because we are at the doorsteps of all your citizens six days a week, we're in your, in your businesses six days a week. So in addition to providing a commercial service to, to your citizens and to our businesses who are, generate the revenue of the postal service, we are also there watching and protecting your communities. We bind the communities together. Now that being said, as a business, we still have to exist as a business. We, as, as a labor union, are doing something that's not natural as a labor union, we are, we are making the business model case. We have hired a major international financial group called the Lazar Group, and in particular, one of their vice presidents, Ron Bloom. Ron Bloom was instrumental in the restructuring of both the steel industry and the auto industry in the United States, most recently working for the Obama administration. They have come up with specific proposals on how to restructure this industry, and we are prepared to move forward. Now, you've heard through the public media that there is a drive by the postal service and the Postmaster General and members of Congress to have us become a five-day delivery service. The oddity of that is, is that this business is actually driving towards seven-day delivery, not going the other way. As consumers, you, you can feel how you want to have your, your products delivered to you. When you order online, or over the telephone, or through the mail, you're tracking your deliveries, and you want them delivered as soon as possible. The businesses get that, and they are moving in that direction, if they are allowed to do so. The postal service will also. Now, postal service has quashed an internal survey that said that if they go to, to five-day delivery in order to save about $2 billion in expenses, they would lose $5 billion in revenue from their commercial vendors. Our Lazar Group that we hired is in agreement. Since the postal service, through legislation, has not been able to move to five-day delivery, one of our regulatory commissions, the Postal Rate Commission, has, three weeks ago now, for the first time, submitted a request for proposal from businesses to conduct a survey to see what the financial impact is to the organization by moving from six-day to five-day. We believe that's backwards, you don't make a decision to make a move before you know what your move is going to look like as a business. So we are, we are pushing to have this done the right way, and we believe that while the Postal Rate Commission is starting up this request for proposal, starting this fund, that we believe is very important that, that the cities and the states... that the cities and the state governments in our country need to have their voices heard before the Postal Regulatory, Postal Rate Commission and to do it through our members of Congress. So I've submitted a resolution for your consideration, and I thank you for it. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Cross?
I haven't read the legislation as a parallel. But in terms of funding, does any of the legislation support how the funding will be for the pension that you talked about? Or is it purely number of days a week services provided?
No, there are, there is language in there in how to restructure the funding of both our annuities, which are overfunded, and also with the health benefit premium fund.
Maybe some, I guess I'll look online, but you get more information on how that's laid out. But it can be summarized in a nutshell.
There are, yes, the, in the United States Senate, they're looking to spread out the amortization of the pre-funding of the health benefit premium over the course of 40 years. The House bill is looking to do similarly, the same thing. And at the same time, they're looking to refund to the postal service over payments into the pension plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
And are we looking to move this through the legislation rule? Are we looking to put it on the next cycle of discussion?
There's a resolution of support.
I didn't know if that was an example or if it was an actual resolution.
Well, we consider that moving.
Government Ops is Lisa Denise and Carl.
Questions or motion?
I'll move it.
I'll say, I'll do a little research on it.
I'll have a favor.
Aye.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I assume you're available for questions going between this week and next week?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
On to Stadium Golf Course Water Agreement, Mr. Foster.
You should have in your package, there was a letter on proposed agreement that came in from a law firm working on behalf of Stadium Golf Course. They are looking to purchase water. And, I'm sorry?
Not me either.
You don't have it? This is page?
Uh huh.
Then I want a little bit more explanation. They would like to renew the agreement. They had an agreement for five years. They were purchasing water at the rate of $0.96 per 100 cubic feet of water. And I presented the information that was sent to me to call upon. He reviewed everything, and he said he has no issues or concerns with renewing everything. He tells me that, on average, they have used three-plus million gallons of water per year. And he didn't see any problems with the rate continuing. And I thought I had the full package presented to him. But Stadium Golf Course is just looking to renew the contract so they can continue to buy water.
Has, have we increased the rate or is it staying the same as it was five years ago?
As it stands right now, it is staying the same. If you wanted to have it start at that rate and then change in relation to the C P I over the next five years, that would be.
The C P I?
Consumer Price Index. And we have, many of our contracts for water and sewer and so on will increase or decrease, because very rarely happens. But in accordance with the C P I, it's probably by the Department of Labor.
What are we charging other municipal, you know, what are we charging municipal powers? Is it in line with what?
A lot of it is based on volume. So we do sell water than humans, but at a larger volume.
So is there anything comparable, any other business that we sell water to?
I could look at our million markers. There is a, and I'm a little bit, there is a C P I in there. So annually for the next five years, it will go up based on C P I. The previous five years, if you go up on C P I, the only difference is where we left off in 12. They wanted to start 13 at that rate. And they can guarantee a minimum, they'll pay for, I believe, it's two million gallons, regardless of the use or don't use it. But on average, I look back there, using, it was a year of $2.6. Obviously, for the last year, they only used, last year, they used over three and a half million gallons in paid work. But there is an escalator in the C P I. But I would check and see. This year, it gets a little bit different rate, but they're buying about a million and a half.
Well, yeah, they're not really comparable to the stadium.
Yeah, so. So they have a little bit different rate.
Mr. Erickson?
So since we don't have the contract or any of the review, I'll ask, what happens if we didn't do a contract? What rate would they be charged? Is there like a default rate if the contract expires?
There are two rates in the city water rate. There is an inside city rate and an outside city rate. So there are two rates.
And what are those compared to?
The inside city rate right now is $1.59 for 100 cubic feet. So it's a dollar sixty.
Dollar, okay. That's for the out?
That's the inside city rate. The outside city rate is a little bit higher. Eight, nine, or 1.9.
And this is, I think when we did their assessment discussions well back there, half in and half out, right?
Correct.
Mr. Thorfinn, this $0.96 per 100 cubic feet. How many years will they be paying that same rate?
They only paid that last year because there was an escalator in previous contract to the C P I. So it went based on C P I annually.
So does it make sense for us to add in that C P I this year before we renew the contract?
It's your decision where you want to start. You know, this is the rate they left off in 2012. They wanted to start a new contract at the same rate for 13. And then when 14 came, they would use the December and the January C P I and raise up to the year.
When does the contract actually expire?
Probably five years from.
Well, when does it expire?
I was going to say April 15.
Today.
Today, the golf start time.
So they're not watering, right? Yeah.
They're not many.
Right, they better hope until next Monday, right?
Questions have been?
I mean, this is a huge revenue discussion. So I mean, I struggle to just say, yeah, let's go with the status quo until I can look over the details and decide whether that's the right rate or not. I mean, clearly, yep, we probably always just extended it and renewed it with this escalator. But, you know, there's a big difference between $0.96 and $1.59. Who knows, maybe the right price is somewhere between.
That's the inside city rate, or water rate right now.
So I just kind of struggle. Do you want to build a 13th hour there? Right.
The total revenue for this is around $20 plus.
So again, we're $11, right, or $12, $13 fairly on this one. I'd like to review it, and if we vote on it, we should do something retroactive.
Yeah, it would be nice to have the information.
It would be nice to have the information, but blah, blah. And I don't think this is the first time we've kind of said that would be important to make decisions.
I will have this scanned and sent out to all of you tomorrow.
We'll address it the next cycle maybe, and then. But you can go retroactive on the break if we need to.
Okay, very good. We will look forward to more information on the water agreement. Anything else to come before government operations? Ask for a motion to adjourn.
To move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, call the order of finance. Bar appointment date revisions. The fact that we had straightened out our council meeting last week, so maybe we got some more questions?
Yep, I'll have Mr. Thorin explain it.
Okay, what you did last cycle was made an appointment for an expired term and made an appointment for a new member. Okay, what this does is, last year, when the two appointments were made, they were made in April and they were set to expire in, one was set to expire in 2013, and the month of April was used. The other was set as a five-year term, and it was set to expire in April of 2018, or 17, rather. What the charter, what the code calls for is these terms to expire in September of whatever year they are. The terms run from October 1st to September 30th. So what this legislation is doing is correcting last year's appointments so that the full terms are represented.
Okay, sounds reasonable to me.
I'll move it.
Moved?
Second.
Second, all favor of correcting. Is there anything else to come before finance?
Move adjourned.
Totally, okay.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, I'll call city development and planning to order. First item on the agenda is St. Anthony's Church. I ask for a waiver for open containers. You have the letter that they sent about that. It's something they do annually for their festival.
I have issues surrounding the festival. It's been a longstanding tradition. I have no problem with that.
Okay, is there a second?
Done.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution for Fair Housing Month, which is now.
Well, as you know, April is the National Fair Housing Month. And this year, we're going to be celebrating the 45th anniversary of the passage of the Federal Fair Housing Act. The Fair Housing Act was enacted in 1968 to prohibit discrimination in housing based on race, color, national origin, religion, and sex. And it was amended in 1986, including disability and familiar status. Last year, LGBT community was also considered to be protected with the Fair Housing Act and under the sex. The city of Schenectady has been actively involved in making sure that everyone who's protected by the Fair Housing Act receive equal treatments and should provide equal opportunities in the housing arena and to further prevent discrimination and protective losses by outreach and monitoring housing-related transactions and campaigns. The Fair Housing Office of the city of Schenectady has conducted numerous one-on-one and public-formatted training for landlords, tenants, homebuyers, real estate brokerage companies, financial institutions, lenders, media, governmental, and nonprofit agencies. The city also is a recipient of federal and state funds for neighborhood housing improvements. Fair Housing has played a major role, monitoring reports, which requires the city to be in compliance with the Fair Housing Act. Recently, under the Mayor McCarthy's leadership, the city has been aggressively marketing in housing stocks. Fair Housing has been given a high priority. And the mayor has asked the staff to be involved further to promote fair housing and make sure that equal opportunity has been offered to all within the city of Schenectady. The copy of 2013 analysis of impairment was just handed to you. It's available on the city website for public. We would like the city council and the mayor to present Fair Housing Resolution at our annual Fair Housing Luncheon, which is going to take place on April 26, 12:00 P.M. at the Stockade Inn, 1 North Church Street. And the cost for the luncheon is $17. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
Oh, somebody?
Okay, second? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, C D B G funding. Mr. Pergin, you wanted to come join us?
Absolutely, I would join you.
Yes. I think I have talked with all of, no, I've talked with all people. I'm going to see if I can summarize where we are, which is definitely not all on the same page at this point. We do have one more cycle before we have to approve this. I know Ms. Brucker is interested in providing funding for the city schools to help with the reading program. I think some of the concerns with this are that the schools never submitted an actual application. You know, whether this is appropriate or not at this point. And again, the biggest question in all of these is where the money is going to come from. I know there is support for some to fund the community loan fund into, mainly to the tune of $10,000. I've talked with Mr. Steiner from the Chamber, and he feels confident he could raise an additional $10,000 to give them the $20,000 that they had requested. Again, I know some support, some not so sure. All right, what am I forgetting? I know.
The lunch program.
The lunch program. Ms. Parazzo is interested in providing about $3,000 more for the lunch program for Sycam. And so again, that's on the table. We really haven't had much discussion on the whole idea of applying for the loan. And I hope we can do that tonight. I know there's people, some people who are supportive, some people who have a lot of questions about the amount that's going to take out of the C D B G grants for the next ever many years to pay it back. And I think also just one concern with any of these programs or applications where we are the sole funding source and organizations have not saw any additional funding anywhere else. So something to look at. Mr. Pergin?
Madam Chair, I have just one proposal that's separate from the other ones. But evidently, the New York State Department of Labor funding has been cut at the county, which was funding the city pools. So in order to keep the Central Park, Hillhurst, and Quack English pools open this summer, the mayor is proposing to add $19,260 to the Schenectady County Youth Bureau's recreational and educational enrichment program. And that would make a total of $43,233. If you turn to page six.
I just have a question about, did they submit an application for funding?
Yes. Yes, they did, yes. And they're recommended, if you turn to page six, they're in the budget, already in the budget.
Oh, they're already in the budget?
They have funded in cash years. Last year and the year before, there was less money used out of C D B G because there was state money available through the county, which really subsidized some of those positions. That money is not available this year.
Right.
And so looking for the $19,000, just over $20,000 so that we'll be able to keep those summer programs at the same level that they have been in past years.
Right. And I don't have an issue with that. But I know that we have in the past, in the 14 years I've been on the council, we just, for the record, have given to individuals that haven't or to organizations or to nonprofits that hadn't actually submitted an application when there were other dollars available and when the need arose. And I think, just an explanation of the school district, just making the pitch, is that, you know, we had no idea, they had no idea, the city of Schenectady and the residents had no idea that these reading programs were going to be cut at the time that the applications were due. So just my two cents in there about that. Ms. Erickson?
My big concern is infrastructure. $300,000 in street rehabilitation is not nearly enough, especially in a year where we're not borrowing, you know, as we typically do to repay roads. I think that's a reduction that's critically inappropriate to go to cut this time.
Okay. And Mr. Perk, I know you told me, I think, the $19,000 for the recreation program is coming out of community policing.
Correct.
Community policing. Ms. Porterfield?
Mr. Perk, did you move any, is there anything that's removed from this budget that was given before?
No.
All right.
No.
Ms. Mayor?
The other suggestion I thought was where the community loan fund is not recommended as part of the original package. What I believe it would add to the overall value if we do the Section 108 loan. And in that loan package, we incorporate some of the proposals for the community loan fund. that loan package, we incorporate some of the proposals for the community loan fund, where, again, my focus has been to knock down the companies who remove the most blighted property. Reality is, staff's putting together a package where, yes, we remove the blight, but we also do some other renovations and some targeted investments to create some housing and other opportunities. And so working with the community loan fund as part of that loan application, give them some dollar, whether it's $10,000, $20,000, this may not be over this three, 12-month period. It might actually be an 18-month period or longer, depending on the time to do the identification of the projects, the demolition, the bidding, and get the projects up. We would have an overall better outcome if we work with the community loan fund and so just incorporate their requests as part of the loan package.
Okay. Is that people comfortable with that, rather than doing it through CDBG?
I'd like to speak about the community loan fund from a different perspective because I'm really not sure, you know, when all that will take place or if it will take place. But in terms of what they bring to the table, when we talked about this before, there was some suggestion that small business, how would do what the community development loan fund does. But the difference is, the community development loan fund gives loans to people that wouldn't normally, aren't normally bankable. Their loans are low-risk. People that they usually loan to cannot usually go to a standard bank and get a loan. Even though that is the case, they do high-risk loans, they still have an excellent record with the people that they work with. So I speak, you know, I think that we should really consider their application. I know that we talked about maybe we couldn't do all of it, but I really think it's something we should consider to be able to increase the opportunities for those who cannot get business loans from standard lending institutions to be able to start a business. And along with that, the community loan fund also gives them support that goes along with that. And most of the people that use the service happen to be minorities and women. So I think that's something we should consider and with CDBG dollars. And as Chuck has said, if we couldn't put it all forward, Mr. Stein, I guess we would, you know, we would support that. So I think it's something we should consider funding some funding and moving money around for.
Ms. Parasso?
One question, Mr. Perkin, and then a comment, or one comment and then a question.
Absolutely.
Just for clarification, saying people of Schenectady still are eligible for those loans and that funding and all of those services, this money that we're talking about for community loan funds is to set up an office here in Schenectady. But those services are still available to people of Schenectady. So this is basically money allotted for salary to have someone located here. So I just want that clear because it's not that our residents can't access those benefits. And secondly, just a question on line 59 of your original budget, the CD program delivery. I think Ms. Brucker figured out that that's Center for Disability Services. Can you tell me the, it's funding for their assistant plan implementation salary and benefits, there's an increase there. Is that something that is contractual or?
It would be contractual. I mean, it's a city, we pay half a person using the block grant funds and that person's Matt Smith, he's our principal planner.
Okay.
And it's basically the cost of living, you know, the benefits going up.
But this is not a contract that says we have to give him a raise? This would be a normal, like, cost of living raise?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
It's a big increase. So if this is half, it's going from 80 to 86?
No, 59, 39 to 43.
Best thing for half the salary.
It's half the sum.
Double that.
But that's salary plus benefits? Benefits are up at, what, 54% now, I believe?
Still, still 8%, 7% increase.
Other questions or comments? All right, shall we talk about the loan, the borrowing, the, suppose it had a many million, 3 million? Mr. Mayor, do you want to?
Again, that's the target number thrown out on a quick review. Staff is putting together a more detailed package, the final number. Again, under that process, you could authorize an application at 3 million or a little bit above, a little bit below. We only make payments on what we would actually use, so it really becomes like a line of credit. Then today, we had two fires, one of which Broadway, both of them are an excellent job in suppression and containment to the one building that they started in. On Broadway, we had minor structural damage, house on Dwayne Avenue that the city owns, and had extensive damage in the process. Now, getting quotes, and we'll demolish that even later tonight or tomorrow. But the city is spending the amount of money that I am proposing in this loan package every year in a controlled way. Where we have these buildings that are out there, they create negative value on the adjacent property in neighborhoods and they drive up our cost of policing and code enforcement and related city support. I'd like to deal with it in a kind of defensive manner, we're getting rid of the worst of the worst and be able to send that message that we're being serious about it, we're trying to attract homeownership and bring other investment back into the community. So yes, it is a big number, but I believe it is a realistic investment. The city's going to spend that amount of money one way or the other over the coming years. We're spending it now, we spend it in the past. We're spending it, I believe, in an unproductive manner. I'd like it to be a better planned and controlled situation where we're doing things that are more proactive as opposed to reactive.
So you would be looking at potential demolition throughout the city of all these?
This proposal is for demolition throughout the city of Schenectady. The target, which is the hundreds of worst properties, and that number varies a little bit based on what our quotes would be and structural reviews that are ongoing, or some properties might be large and salient, other those are not.
Okay. Anybody have questions for the mayor on that or Mr. Perkin? And we said we would be talking about, what, $150,000 for the, to repay the loan each year?
That's the estimated payment if we borrowed 3 million dollars. So that would, in our sales tax agreement, we have the county contributing $100,000 a year for demolition, so that would go toward that payment, again, it adds value to the loan application where we've got that revenue stream coming in. And so if we, it's like, rates determine when we actually do the deal. But if we, suppose we ended up, we borrow 3.2 million, the number would be a little bit more. If we ended up, we're only at 2.7 million, then the numbers are corresponding, lower amount. But at the $100,000, $150,000, again, in policing, overtime, fire services, we are spending that money now. And it is, it was somewhat unusual that they were nine to five events.
Yeah.
It does not happen normally. It's at 2:00 in the morning, we're mobilizing staff, bringing people in. Again, we deal with whatever we have to, put our best spin on it. But I want to try and get ahead of the curve and take the opportunity into, continue through the things that we've done downtown to move that message out into the neighborhood.
Ms. Parasso?
Point of clarification, I just want to make sure that I understand exactly what you're saying. So you're saying we would borrow 3 million dollars over a 20-year loan and the payment would be about $150,000 a year to pay back? And we would dedicate the $100,000 from the county to that loan payment?
Yes.
So the city's portion would be 27,000 or 50,000 or 70,000, depending on how-
For the first eight years.
Right. Okay.
Because I think some of us were trying to figure out how we would deal with CDBG next year, having to take $150,000 off the top of it.
Yes, next year, we're proposing the high 40s to 60,000, 50,000, $60,000. And the other is, if we say $100,000, say it's $50,000, we take down. Those lots have some value. Right now, I'll tell you, they don't have any value. We've cleared it off, we want to build a market, it's the adjacent property owners or put houses back under. And so, again, it's, they're called, say, are they worth $5,000 each? Are they worth $10,000 each? I don't have a good grasp at this point, but there is some value there. So we're going to have 50 or 100 lots that have some value. And it's, if it's $5,000 a lot, 100 lots, that's $500,000. Again, depending on purpose of the council, so that would be us grow to make future payments on that loan.
Ms. Erickson?
Clearly, doing that, it will clearly increase the value of adjacent and nearby property.
What's the, I mean, I know it's probably fluctuating a bit, well, interest rates on this would be similar to rates we get for other things, or is it, whatever we guess that interest rate is.
Approximately 4%.
4%?
Yeah. And that can vary per year, but we're, that's the extra 6,000 in that, 56,000, 4% interest.
Like, but the $150,000 payment is really just for principal, right? That'll cover, you know, basically the entirety. For a $3 million loan? About a ton?
For a 20-year, 20-year period. So $150,000 a year.
In just principal?
In principal, right. Yep.
Any other questions or comments regarding this? We will obviously continue having some conversations next couple of weeks. Just one more question. Is there a risk in looking down the road 10 years from now that CDBG, Community Development Block Grant monies are not even going to be available to communities at all? I mean, I know, it's a crapshoot. I get it.
And again, by understanding this, and I have friends in the federal government who are always sending it down to us, we have to deal with it. That note becomes secured by that revenue stream coming in. So we look at the package, if they didn't give us the money, we're not able to get-
No, it's kind of my question. That's kind of my thought work, so.
And I believe the city should live up to its obligations, but also the federal government to live up to their partnership with a lot of this.
And they're offering this with the care that you can use CDBG dollars to-
It's not, it's not, it becomes a requirement. So we can look at the budget, we should know how to be paid for it, but if we didn't make the payment, they would take it out of the CDBG revenue stream.
If the CDBG revenue stream goes away, as Perkin was, you know, kind of saying, possible. They would, I mean, I'd have to read the contractor, but it sounds like, to me, I would assume they'd still come after the city to say, hey, you owe us the money. And then if we went, you know, we're still a seller entity and we have to pay it. Clearly, you know, if you think about a regular loan, if I have a mortgage and I say, hey, I don't have the money, they're going to foreclose, they're going to take everything I got before they leave me alone and go to somebody else to pay it. But I mean, I would assume they'd still be on the hook for that. So it'd be interesting to see how that language, contractual language would play, that would say, if we lose the revenue stream, we're not responsible for payment. That's a-
You're able to take a look at it. It'd be interesting to see how that gets raised.
Madam Chair, just one more question. Do we know, or do you know of any other municipalities that are now engaged in this, or is this something brand new? Or are there other?
This has been done for years, for major projects.
Absolutely. The City of Rochester had a major, I think it was a retail development.
Okay, so Rochester has already utilized this funding stream. Anybody else in your state that knows?
The good news is our rep, our HUD rep, we deal with, almost on a daily basis, was the Rochester rep, and he's very familiar with that Rochester project.
Okay, Ms. Parasso and then Ms. Porterfield.
My apologies, because you probably already explained this to us, but I'm not remembering. Can you explain line two, the affirmative action counter compliance office going from $25,000 award to a $51,000 award?
Absolutely. If you recall, last year, we had a $25,000 contract with the county affirmative action office. That was done at the time on, not a fiscal year, but on a calendar year basis. What this 50,000, what that 25,000 did is bring them up to July 1st of this year, and then this 50,000 will put them on the calendar, the fiscal year of the block grant, the consolidated plan money.
So that's in line.
Prior years, it had been $50,000, but they were really, we were giving them $25,000 too much that they won't use it. So last year, we cut it back to $25,000 so that their budget year would match this allocation. And there's also $1,000 added there just for the place area costs and the town to get acquisitions. It was up by $1,000.
Ms. Porterfield?
Back to the loan that we're talking about. So you said that Rochester did something similar?
They did something, as I understand it, was an economic development project in the city, of some retail development.
And they used their CDBG funding?
They used this Section 108 loan guarantee program, right?
This has been done across the country many times, sometimes very successfully, sometimes less than across it. It goes off, the city has looked at it off and on throughout the years, and has never really had any project that got what they call block-based community support, council support to move ahead.
I'm sorry. And the Department of Development Program Delivery Increase, is that contractual or is that possible?
It's cost of living, yeah.
And I should also note that Mr. Perkin and I talked this morning, and that he has gotten information that there may be, that 5% that was cut may be reinstated, but do you have any idea when you would know or?
No, we've received no formal notification from him, but when the mayor and I were out there, you know, they did mention some possible extra FEMA recapture money coming in. Hopefully, that's the case.
Just looking at, I mean, rough numbers, it looks like, you know, areas like the housing category went from 301 to 393. Public service went from 553 to 570, but then the public works decreased from 1.5 to 1.4, change in there. Why did we decrease the public works? I mean, A, in terms of rehabilitation, I think that's probably one of the most important things we'd be doing here.
Very, very important.
Fix up our neighborhoods. And, you know, I think I've had a lot of people tell me that just the street paving we've done, as small as, you know, a small amount that we've done has been great. I mean, if people are doing it in the streets, it's like, hey, I had to drive to work, it was smoother, so they're happy. So, you know, for us to be reducing that section seems to be counterproductive. Why are we reducing that section?
We were reducing that by approximately $200,000 from what we did last year to fund our programs. I mean, we're cut, if you look at the block grant amount we got this year compared to last year, we're down 96,000. So-
Cut 200,000 from?
Because we wanted to maintain, like, the other public services, like the pools, we wanted to maintain the pools. And it turned out what we presented to you initially, that wasn't even enough. So, you know, in order to fund, keep the level of service with a lot of these programs, that's why we reduced the street service.
And we could probably go spend about 200 hours going through, you know, this, but why are the other services getting that much more expensive and we don't seem to be getting any better? It's the same service. Yet it's getting, it's accelerating in terms of how much more it's costing time after time, if the service is staying the same or in some cases deteriorating.
If you look at the agencies that we funded, they're at last year's level. If you look at the agencies that we funded, they're at last year's level. We didn't, we did not increase, you know, the, in order to maintain that level of service that they were funded at last year, we had to use that street service money. It's a very, very tight circle.
Gave them some amount of money, then they shouldn't have cost more. Those areas are actually, they're causing changes.
I mean, again.
So, we're removing money out of public works to spend it on other services.
On other areas.
Other services.
To maintain the status quo.
To standardize that as well, that's, that's, okay, I'm not necessarily a fan, but.
Anything else? All right, as I said, we will continue the discussions and, you know, kind of, if we do decide to do any of these other additional funding, we just have to figure out what we, where we take it out, and that's the hard part. It would be nice if we knew we were getting the 5%, and then we could just plug it in to fund the different things that we would like to fund, but unfortunately, since we don't know that, we can't do much with it. So, all right, we will continue the discussion. Thank you, Mr. Perk.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay. Halfway houses. Mr. Polster?
My first question is, last week, I sent down to Steve the proposed legislation. Is it in your package?
Get nervous now, right?
It's not in there.
It went in late today. I, I had, I'm sorry, I had left the, I had left it in there after Steve said to pull it, but then, when you came back with the legislation, he was not aware of that, and I didn't get the okay from him until this morning.
Okay, fine, okay.
So, it's in the later packet.
Okay.
The one that went out late today.
This issue is one that council passed a moratorium on a while ago, and there have been a number of issues raised with the location of where the halfway houses are designed and the legislature should be. I'm now to review a number of ordinances that other municipalities have enacted, and this is a proposal that I have a problem with. And if you are willing to entertain it, and obviously, it's subject to whatever modifications you would want to make, at this point, we would be calling for a public hearing, because it would, and actually, I apologize, right now, I think what you've got in front of you is marked as a resolution. It would be an ordinance. Again, it's just a draft, but.
Actually, yes, it is a local law.
Oh, all right. I do have down there's a local law?
A local law establishing zoning regulations for halfway houses.
Okay. As I said, it's not in front of me, I'm going from memory. But, yeah, it would be a local law, we wouldn't do, have a public hearing, and go through the full process. So, if that is something that you are willing to entertain, then.
Call for the public hearing.
Calling for a public hearing.
Okay. Anyone ready to move that? Ms. Porterfield?
Yes.
Second by Ms. Carraso. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is there something else to come before city development and planning? I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
May I?
Oh, okay.
One quick question. Going back to the CDBG allocation, you are not taking any action next week, you are just working.
Continuing the discussion.
Right. I'm just trying to be sure.
Yep. Okay. Ms. Porterfield moves to adjourn?
I think I have one more.
Okay.
One thing I'd like to just say, I believe, so the lease came under city development planning with the grant that we applied for, the National League of Cities.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we were not, we were not, we're not chosen. But the mayor is being invited to meet with other mayors in a group regarding diversity, so you should be receiving the invitation this week, and it'll be a coalition of mayors working in partnership with the Open Society Foundation. So, we weren't successful in getting the technical assistance, but the mayor is being invited to come to talk with other mayors about what can be done in your city, so.
Okay. Very good. All right, now I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
I'm over.
Okay. Ms. Porterfield, and the second by Ms. Carraso. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Off the order of House of Recreation. Let's do one more. Okay. One more.
This is, once again, Steinman's Park Resolution to, it's an amend the resolution to include capital budget codes HV-017 and HW-617, which should have been in the original resolution for the total budget funding of $585,400.
Any questions?
Anything? Are we just adding the budget codes, or is there dollars and cents change?
We're adding the budget codes, because the code that was on there was, there should have been three, we only had the one to cover the budget amount. The code that was on there was for the grant amount only, which was, but we're not approving any additional money for any of the contractors, no.
One more question. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on a second. I was looking at public services, like, wait, are you, are you?
Do we need to do this as well?
Turn your page. Oh, I don't have that.
Well, was that left over from the last cycle? And maybe that could be done?
It's again from the public hearing, looking to amend that fee structure to, to military or veterans' rent. I wonder if there's a dollar change in something else that we're not, that we're allowing to do. I just, I didn't have the overall history.
Are there any questions? We're good, Ericson?
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I was just probably looking at, you know, some of the fees, and we have some situations where non-residents are getting, I need to break. I mean, but my, my thought would be, this is the city golf course, right? We borrow for it, we, you know, talk about it, we work on it, it's our, you know, it's our golf course, yet we're forwarding discounted rates to non-residents. And I think that, you know, whether it's veterans, senior, you know, June, even the junior rates, great, we should give them the discount for residents, but if it's a non-resident, I think weekend, weekday, you get a rate, regardless of who you are, what you did, how old you are. Just my thing, but, that fits, so, I mean, I just think that's important to not give the discount to non-residents, is what I'd like to say.
And anytime, or just, or just on the weekend, if you said?
Well, I mean, we have a week rate and a week, a weekday and a weekend, right? And so, if you're a non-resident, if you're a junior, which, right now, we have juniors who can play golf 18 holes for $11, and they can not be from the city, which is cheaper than I can play. And it just seems to me that if you don't live in the city, you should pay the weekday or the weekend rate. Not sure if that's, you know, sounds, if there's, you know, if somebody has an argument against that, you know, I'd be willing to reconsider, but to me, it's illogical that we can give discounts or reduce rates to residents. I think there was something else. I have no, I'm trying to read my own writing, but I think it was the, yeah, I think the rates was the big one there.
Rates.
Yeah, I don't know if anyone's willing to.
I guess, I want a clarification of what you're proposing. Are you saying never give a senior rate to a non-resident? Or just give a higher senior rate, but still with a little bit of a discount?
Probably open to either, but prefer, I mean, my thought would be, the rates are the rates, right? If you go to another golf course in the area, they have a price for daytime and a price for, you know, or.
I thought, I, I understand what you're saying, I was just trying to clarify. I would feel uncomfortable in not offering discounts to our veterans and seniors, whether they live here or they don't live here. I think it's fair that it should be a couple dollars more if they don't live here, but we're also talking about a demographic that, you know, is a struggling demographic, and veterans that have laid their life on the line for our country, even if they don't live in Schenectady. So, I mean, I would be willing to support a small increase for non-residents, but I still think we should build in some sort of a decrease in rates. And same thing's for the junior. I mean, that, whether it be, you know, $11 if you're a resident, $13 if you're not, or whatever the case may be, but we want to encourage families to come to our golf course, we don't want to make it exorbitant, right? We want people to choose us instead of choosing.
I want residents to actually move here and then get the rates.
Well, of course. But we want to encourage people to use our course, too. I mean, that's healthy for the city and healthy for, you know, bringing people into Schenectady to follow up with us.
Sure.
That they eventually.
Yeah, so, I mean.
But I agree with you more.
If, right, I mean, my initial thought was, discounts are for residents only, if you want to give a slight discount, but it's less, you know.
Right.
It shouldn't, your price shouldn't be the same regardless of if you live in the center of the city.
You're right.
It looks like they have.
In some categories, but not in.
No, I'm talking about the veterans and the seniors, non-resident.
Yeah.
They are less than our, I mean, they are a little bit more, they're $2 more than.
The other aspect of this is that we do not have detailed empirical data to put a rate structure in place that maximizes course utilization. Software systems have been in place a couple of years, we have not used that. One of the directives I've given to a new pro, we're on better record keeping in line, more detailed analysis, so that in fact, we could come back with a rate structure that increases utilization, so that we're maximizing revenue. You have peak times, early in the morning, everybody wants to tee off, there's Sunday afternoons where nobody is on the course. And it's, how do you get people to play on Sunday afternoon? I understand this, Ericson, is only here, but whether you're a resident or non-resident, I'd rather have some revenue coming in on Sunday afternoon than having nothing there, and really, the course is empty, right? And so, we put in, reactivated the golf course advisory committee, got a new pro in place, have the ability and the directive now to actually keep the records, so that we can come back, look at utilization, and as an ongoing basis, you know, annually, look at this, what should we do with the rates? Do you actually increase some things, do you decrease some things? Do you, again, kind of get us where we want to be, so people have an affordable, pleasurable experience, but we have the revenue to at least afford and maintain the first-class facility.
Makes sense. I think that's, that's good data. I realized what my other note was that I couldn't read before, and an idea of, for residents, having an annual fee, you can join other golf courses.
We have that, plus.
It's not in here, though.
That was the proposal changing, I thought it was.
I didn't see.
No, that, that fee's not listed on here.
Okay. It's in place, by the council, so.
Okay, what is, just, anybody know what that fee is?
I believe the fee is, it's either, I think it's $3 to renew annually. I believe it was a dollar, and it was raised to three.
No, no.
For the year.
It's a thousand and something for the resident rate, and then, $200, $1,200 something for the, you know, the seasons pass.
Oh, you're talking about season passes?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, season passes, 750 for a senior resident, 850 for a resident, 1150 for a non-resident. But we are not proposing to change any of those. And just like what this is, this was not to propose to really change the rates, this was proposed to add new rate structures, because we believe we had holes, and that's why, you know, you'll see that these are all kind of logical, they're $2 less for the senior, it's a, it's a kind of a blanket. We're not trying to propose anything, because like the mayor said, we're looking to study to see where our holes are, to really come back maybe and do something in the future, but this was just because of what we realized, where we had some holes in our, in our current structure.
So, Mr. Erickson, after the mayor's explanation, are you comfortable with the juniors, whether they're a resident or not?
Well, I mean, not how I would fill out the form, I guess, but, you know, I think we compromise on it, I think that would be fine. I mean, I, I'm not sure how I feel. I mean, I think that, sometimes I feel it's a city golf course, and we should be offering the discount to city residents only regardless, but, you know, an effort to fill gaps, right? Golf course is not being used, you're better off getting a dollar from somebody just to make a buck, so it looks like, you know, we're doing some analysis on it, and we're learning as we go, over the next couple of years, we get this data, and I'll revisit it if needed.
Right, can mean to, it would need to make increases.
Okay.
Any other questions? There was one other thing that was brought up, I'm sorry.
One question.
You had a question?
No.
Oh, okay. There was, that was something that was brought up at the public hearing regarding rates for persons with disabilities, if that was something that could be included in this, there would be some rate, special rate, discount rate.
So, the private city council, this one.
I don't play golf, but I think it's a reasonable request, so.
Is it a veteran, senior, disabled?
Does it add them to the same, to the category?
Just veterans and seniors.
Just one question, thank you. That's my question. How do you categorize disability?
Well, we're not just talking about physical disabilities, you can talk about mental disabilities, you can talk about a lot of other things, and how. People can self-identify, and some people that are disabled, they could, if they chose to, and then some people, there aren't cards, some people have cards that actually say they're disabled.
They would need a card.
Yeah, I would, I would, just one thing I would state with that, is that as it is right now, we put a lot of kind of, you know, pressure on the pro shop staff to identify, you know, residents through the cards, and we're going to, this would put it just, if there was a way to actually categorize it, I think that would be great, because it would be to the detriment to, you know, have someone that's behind the pro shop, a seasonal person, have to make the call on what is disabled and what is not disabled.
So, like, there's a public hearing, it's like.
I, I don't know.
Well, I think, I think it's going to be a struggle, because veterans and seniors
have a very, you either are or you're not, right? And I'm sure there are, it just says kids, we, someone tried to get into a movie by claiming they were a year older than they were, and maybe there's somebody who's going to claim they're a year younger or a year, year older to get the senior discount, but you can prove that with the driver's license. I think, you know, this makes a good point, is what do you consider disabled? Now, there's a whole range and a whole, you know, the clerk is going to sit there and go, eh, you look disabled, and is there now, how disabled are you? Right, I mean, so this is getting a big mess, to try to decipher who gets the discount, who doesn't.
So, we should maybe, I mean, because it's a request, and I don't think it's unreasonable, so can we talk to folks downstairs in the Center for Disability to find out, you know, how those identifiers are made?
Sure. I, I think we could, if there's other municipalities that do it, and they're successful in how they do it, differentiate, I think it's worthy, but I think we're going to struggle to have a clerk at the golf pro shop on a busy day determining, you know, taking a look at you and determining whether you qualify or not. I think that would be problematic, at least.
So, we can always amend these down the road, right, after some more?
Well, I think we need another public hearing, but I just.
No. No, we have the public hearing on these, on these, these rates, correct?
Correct.
And nobody, you know, there wasn't any dissension.
Oh, meaning if we approve this tonight, and then, a month from now, we want to add in some clarification, can you have another public hearing?
It just sounds like we would need to do some research as to.
What other places to.
How would the places handle it? How?
So, this is a little bit sensitive, so I'd like to get the signing jump, so we get the rates in place and be able to go forward.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you. Sorry, man.
Thank you. I asked, the legislation regarding the, the, again, the agenda again, I know that we, we actually passed the legislation, but as I understand it, the agreement is not finalized yet, and I want to know where we were with that.
I am, as you have a draft, I, Carl Alapico has prepared this, I, the, I have not had an opportunity to review the draft, but I know that Carl has been talking to a number of people to put their concerns, including Stephanie, who's been in it, and you can take a look at this, and we don't need any more legislation, assuming that we'll be providing a copy of this to the people at the Panneus American Association, and I expect that we'll come up with a back and forth a little bit before we get to the final text, but I suspect this is relatively close.
Any questions, discussion?
Seems like you've completed negotiations, I'll sign you.
Any questions, discussion?
Seems like you've completed negotiations, I'll sign you.
Is there financial consideration? Is there financial consideration?
No.
I don't think so.
Just that they would maintain the facility.
You're doing some improvements, the, yeah.
There are some improvements in the maintenance.
I guess, are there any questions? There was one thing regarding the bathrooms and where are they usable or do they do some work on that?
They need to do work in the bathrooms and the session building, so.
Is that something that's in the works or? That would be their responsibility? So, they would be responsible for, or we would?
They would. So, it's similar to what that, this, they would be responsible for improvements, for maintenance and for utilities insurance. Similar, very similar to what you have in the pleasure facilities, where they have facilities and they have equipment, they have, they have that, and they get here.
Are bathrooms currently usable though? Okay, so, so do we have to get them up to where they're usable? Because Little League's, the bathrooms are usable, they're gonna keep them clean, but are these, these aren't even usable? Are the city, will they at least make them usable? And then they maintain them, make sure they're clean, et cetera?
There are no, no money, but you have to renovate the bathrooms again. Nor, I recommend they be renovated until security measures are put in place to keep them from being destroyed. The bathroom consists of one toilet, one sink for men, one toilet and one sink for women. To utilize this facility with the numbers of people that they're reselling, is gonna require significantly more space, bathroom space, which should and could be accommodated with porta-johns, old banker porta-johns. So even if the bathrooms that are in place were functional, they would not take care of the needs of the number of individuals that the utilization facility. One bath, one men's room, one ladies' room, probably much to accommodate fifteen or twelve people. There are now, there are now new urinals in the bathroom or additional stalls in ladies' rooms. Toilet flush here, one, second.
And they were very aware of that when this whole legislation was, they knew it was their responsibility. They came to the council with a proposal, how they were gonna upgrade the field. They were completely aware of the fact that the city wouldn't be investing in bathrooms because there just isn't any money to invest in bathrooms and security. So, they, you know, that, that was.
They do have a very nice structure there, that there would cost a hundred thousand dollars probably to build that structure. So they have something that's certain. And again, I would recommend they or anyone else renovate it so they have the appropriate security device to keep it from being destroyed. It's been regularly vandalized.
Okay, I have one other question. Mr. Colson, we were discussing this, there were a couple of other groups that were supposed, were like wanting to be a part of this process. I see that it's just the one contractor, will they be included here in this language anyplace or is there just some understanding?
This contract is non-exclusive, so other groups can use it. And if, it was my understanding that they were gonna work that out among themselves as to how they're gonna schedule the games, et cetera. And this contract is expressly non-exclusive. So, if there are other entities that you want to include, you would need the names and then you would have to pass additional legislation.
Yes.
I would recommend that this be administered by a five oh one two three, so that it's not for popularization.
Yes, it is.
The fees that they charge for leagues would be the revenue that they, like this, to cover their operating expenses, to cover their utility costs and maintenance costs. They can even have sweat equity for leagues, so you would post a security deposit. If you did the work that you were required to do, you'd get it back, you didn't, the organization keeps the money. But as a five oh one two three, everybody would pay the same amount, be able to participate. You may want to be involved in what those fees are, have some, some control over what is charged. Or not, that's up to you. But it should be open and available to anyone who wants to, you know, play there. And everybody should play by the same set of rules, that everybody should pay the same fees. And the money, all monies that are collected should be publicly accounted for. And again, utilized to cover the expenses associated with the operations of the facility. They clearly collect significant amounts of money with the number of leagues, that's a huge facility with the number of leagues that can play there. That money could be used to make significant improvements in the facility. Again, I think it's important to build a profit from that, but that, those monies are utilized. However, they are equal. And probably, very, again, very similar to what we do at L.A.
And I guess, as I understand it, the Panneus American Association is a five oh one C three, they have to show us that where they are, right?
But this might not exist.
Yeah, they already did, that's why they were chosen for the organization.
So, we already had that. But if this is just an amount of fees, though, that they use to improve the facilities, if they have to. Yes, Mr. Erickson?
Another question. I was looking under the termination of the city's concerns, and it says that the city has a right to terminate the agreement within ten days of notice. If in the city's judgment, the contractor is not conducting operations according to the terms of contract, which I'll be mentioned here, or the contractor's policies or practices in the management of the premises is detrimental to the performance of the city's duties, yada, yada. So, do we have a copy of their policy? Because if we were to, if we were wanting to terminate at some point, we would have to then specify the policy that makes termination necessary. And if there's no policy, we wouldn't be able to terminate the agreement.
No, that, well.
I just, I read it quickly, so I don't know if I've misinterpreted it.
How do we distinguish policies and practices? It just, we've already got practices in there. So whatever they're doing prevents the city from doing its function, most likely we would give them notice. And if they don't change, then we will terminate.
But I mean, like, the example that Carl Olson gave with, kind of made reference to in terms of if they were to charge different fees to different groups. Vince and I wanted to go and play a long game there, and they said, okay, how much? And I said, well, for you guys, a hundred bucks an hour. Right? If that was occurred, well, if the rates aren't posted in the policies, then we couldn't use that as a reason to terminate, right?
No, because this is non-exclusive, and if they're discriminating one group to another for whatever reason, they can say you can't do that. And then, because that would be detrimental to the function of the city, bringing everybody to shame.
I think, but it references the policies. I just, I wanna make sure that before we sign it, we have the policies posted or in here somewhere else that says that they're required to actually provide policies.
I think that's what we're waiting for.
Right, okay. And it's gonna be referenced in the agreement if we're gonna use it to terminate at some point in the future.
Okay. You're still working on this?
Yes.
Okay, so, any further discussion?
Can go right now.
Okay. Want to come back to this in reference to Colson? And if I'll have a last question?
Yeah, I'll just get it signed, you know.
Just get it signed and go.
All right. The next thing is Harvard's community center is celebrating its 75th anniversary, and I just wanted to do a, they requested a ceremonial resolution for that, if you'd like to pack it, so.
Is that something that would be presented at a council meeting or at their event?
They actually want to come to the council meeting together, they made that specific request. So, are there any questions or can we stand a motion? I need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Arber, did you have a confirmation?
Yeah, this is something that Harvard Landtree has done really for Harvard Day. And let's see, Henry asked that to be brought forward. I think that quite a few trees on Sunday too are re-treesed, so I want to see this on the floor.
All in favor of the motion?
Subtle.
I'm sorry, all in favor, aye. Anything else coming for health recreation? Motion to adjourn?
Subtle.
Second? All in favor?
Okay, call to a republic safety and first item on the agenda is to recognize National Crime Victims Week. A motion to be approved, unless someone has a second question. Chief Seaver, you're up, New York State Prevention, D.V. Prevention Grant.
Good evening. Kind of speaks for itself, as I presented the legislation before, but New York State Office of Prevention of Domestic Violence has, wants, wishes to contract with us for some funds that they'll provide. It's basically the high-risk program that they have, it's a team effort, it's almost like a task force made up of different agencies, both domestic violence advocates, DA's office and so forth. They're willing to provide, the police department, seventeen thousand, eight hundred dollars, and overtime funds be used. It could be in the middle of the night when called out for domestic issues that we need to address immediately to proactive type of enforcement, that referrals are made to the team and analyzed by the team, and then directions given from the team to do some kind of proactive activities, home visits and so forth, depending what it is.
Always willing to accept money, especially for that cause, more help we have, the better.
There's no match.
There's no match, no, this is strictly, it's an overtime fund that we can use for deployment of our resources.
Mr. Erickson?
Is this, just curious, is this amount in our budget or is this additional to the budget?
No, this is a new one, we set them up through finance, they don't generally enter about, these grants don't generally enter our budget. They're M account or T account, I forget, but there's a separate fund, so if, in this case seventeen thousand, eight hundred dollars, we set a line item for that, and as we draw it down, it comes out of that line item.
All those in?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're turned. Call to order for public service and utilities, if you all.
All in favor?
Call to order for public service and utilities, if you all.
Hello, getting a little background information on this project, I'm sorry if some of you weren't aware of it. This is a federal aid project that is funded by CMAC money. CMAC stands for congestion mitigation and air quality. CMAC money will be going away from New York State at the end of next year. And as a result of CMAC money, it's actually, I guess, a good thing and a bad thing. We've reached attainment status, air quality in the area has improved, and New York State no longer qualifies to receive this money. As a result, the state, in conjunction with our local MPO, the CDTC, has allowed us to push forward with this project, which was originally set for construction in three years early, so we can take advantage of the money that was earmarked for the project. I've been working with the MPO, our CDTC, and the New York State DOT, Commissioner Olson, and the mayor's office to get this in line. And we have in front of us here a request to authorize that we, with Barton LeJudas for design services, and we also have the, I just, I'm kinda gonna go one and two together as they are related. The Schedule Eight Form, which shows that the state has authorized the funding, this in form of two hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars, broken up very similarly to, exactly like the Erie Boulevard project is ongoing, eighty percent matched by the federal government, fifteen percent matched by the state, and five percent being a city share. The project is for the improvement of the Erie Boulevard, Notch Street, J Street, and Front Street intersection. Right now, it is kind of a convoluted large intersection where we have, you know, several, you know, backups. It's a class F rated intersection, so it's the lowest class intersection that we have and that the state categorizes. The idea is to improve that, to improve pedestrian safety and traffic flow, and improving traffic flow to improve the air quality, which is why I qualified for this type of a grant, or this type of funding, not a grant. So, this is in front of you now to proceed with the resolution. I will then send that with an agreement to the state to receive back our federal authorization to proceed with the work. And it's kind of where I have it right now, is this is one of the first steps to going forward where the project.
So, back in front of the council on several, at several, you know, several more opportunities if we visit this project.
And.
Design work done.
Design phases one through six.
We get that intersection now, this will stay ahead of the hurt a little bit, is the development occurs at the Alco site, which will feed in from the Front Street side, for now we have the funds coming in from that street, a little bit from the J Street intersects at the upper end of Erie Boulevard.
That development will be coordinated with these intersection improvements.
Correct.
Makes a lot of sense. We also have some infrastructure work that we are gonna be required to do, whether or not this improvement takes place. And the benefit of this is we don't have to pay for the surface improvements. I mean, Paul and I will be looking at implementing those infrastructure improvements and coordinating that with this project so that the surface improvements that this pays for will win after. So, after we tear the road up to put in our sewer and water, we don't have to, and stormline improvements, we don't have to rebuild it with our money. So we'll coordinate the work that has to be done under the ground, with the work that's being done above the ground.
An additional thing I'd like to bring to your attention, though, is that this is for the amount of two hundred sixty-nine thousand, for two hundred fifty-four thousand, a design phase is one through six, and fifteen thousand a right-of-way incidentals. What you don't see here are the other phases like Carl was talking about. We will outline them in our budgets going forward for 2014 and 2015. However, the right-of-way acquisition phase of it could be anywhere, you know, from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars. And construction right now is earmarked around one point seven five, that's the estimate right now, one point seven five million, correct? I'm sorry. So, like, this is just the start of this project, so I wanted to make sure that you guys are all aware of what kind of the costs that.
Hold on a minute, second. This is just the first stage of a big project that they have.
This is the design stage of the entire project.
This is good.
This is, yes, this is, it's real good that we were able to get this together. It's quick, I commend Chris for his work with CDTC. A lot of communities have lost their funding because they couldn't get the project in order quickly enough to be able to, we have to put a shovel in the ground by the fall of 2014. So, again, this is going to be in front of you on several more occasions with the plans of actually letting a contract by the fall of 2014. I don't even think we have to put a shovel in the ground.
No, no shovel in the ground, but we have to have.
We gotta have a signed contract with a construction company to perform the work by the fall of 2014. So we were able to get our ducks in a row quickly enough to take advantage of the CMAC funding, which, again, as Chris indicated, will disappear.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, please all, can you stand the motion on the first one, the agreement?
Subtle.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And to explain, both, so, can you stand the motion on the second one?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And Mr. Olson, Mr. Farman, the word of one subject?
As you're aware, every year we look at water improvements in our infrastructure. This year, based on last year's water main break on, under the Oak Street Bridge, we realized that we have a dead-end line on Cheltenham Avenue. This project is going to loop that dead-end line into Popular Street for two reasons. One is when we did the shutdown to make that repair on the river track, we put a lot of people out of water because with a dead-end line, you can't flow water both ways. The other thing with the dead-end line is, in a system, you want water flowing all the time. A dead-end line, it's stagnant, it lays there. A good distribution system, you remove the dead-end lines when you find them. So the first project of this year is gonna be to put about nine hundred and seventy-five feet of six-inch pipe from the dead end of Cheltenham Avenue's water line to Popular Street to loop that in. There were, it was bid, there were eight bids, the low bid was Tom Cabricky, four hundred and three thousand and some change. So the request is to move forward and approve that.
This is a capital item that was approved in our 2013 capital budget for the water fund, and it came in actually a little bit under budget.
And then based on funding that I left, we'll look at some other critical projects that we want to do with the remaining funds for 2013 and get those out to bid soon. But we wanted, this was one that we weren't looking at, we weren't aware that there was a dead-end line till last year.
At first I was, I was completely, just had a smile on my face as he said eight bids, but the part that was even better than that, he said it became under budget. So I think there's a connection there. Thank you.
And that's tremendous. I mean, it goes from 174 down to 103. I mean, that's a beautiful.
Well, getting bids out this time of the year is also critically important because construction companies are just beginning their work, to plan their work. The quicker we can get our bid specifications together and out on the table, the timing of the bid is very good.
If nobody has any questions, I'll move in. All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Start work tomorrow.
And Mr. Wall?
This is a permit number 574 to Shamow Realty for the installation of two boughs that will crouch on the city right-of-way. It is a revocable permit. The boughs came actually at the suggestion of myself and the traffic department due to issues that we were having at this particular intersection with traffic from the parking lot, driving and using the handicap ramp like a curb cut. This was the most cost-effective, easiest solution for both pedestrian and motorist safety, and the property owner, Shamow Realty, is fully cooperative with it and has no issues. Excuse me? Bough, it's a barrier, cylindrical, usually about three to four feet in height, prevents you from going, usually motors from going to one side or the other.
Any questions? Any motion? Second. All in favor?
Thank you.
If there's nothing else to come before public safety, if you could please, I'll take the motion to adjourn. Second.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Return.
Call to order claims, we discussed downward versus city, Calgary Baptist Church, sale of 744 Hamilton Street. All executive session.
I will move that we go into executive session. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Executive session.